Good evening, everyone. And before we call this meeting to order, we will hear instruction on how the public may access Spanish interpretation.
Hello. Hello, everyone. We're offering live interpretation in Spanish during this meeting. If you wish to hear Spanish interpretation, please click the interpretation button at the bottom right of your Zoom screen. You will see a globe icon. Please click on it and choose the language of your preference, either English or Spanish. Do not stay in the default off. Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en español en vivo. Si ustedes escuchan la interpretación en español, por favor haga clic en el botón de interpretación. Y usted va a ver un icono de globo terráqueo. Presiónenlo y escoja el idioma de su preferencia, ya sea español o inglés. Por favor, escoja un idioma y no se vaya a quedar en la posición de apagada pero de determinada. Gracias.
With that, we will call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. With that, we'll move on to a roll call.
Yes, I will be taking roll call. Chair Viorcek?
Present.
Vice Chair Luxinger?
Here.
Commissioner Feiger?
Here.
And Commissioner Imhoff is absent. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And we'll move on to public communications, which is the public's opportunity to speak on any topic which is not on today's agenda. We will limit comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing none, let's open it up to Zoom.
Go ahead and open up our Zoom platform.
Oh, no, we do have some. Sorry, I'm like running through it so quickly. Come on up. Yeah, this is best for topics not on the agenda today, correct? Okay, awesome. I'm Dreah. Hello. I've lived here 13 or 14 years now. And I'm here today because of an article in South Tahoe Now that came up, and it mentioned just a blip about a potential Starbucks going into the Jack in the Box location with the drive-through in Midtown. I was just curious. It had me thinking, and then we talked around town. Does South Lake Tahoe need a 12th Starbucks location on the South Shore? I am very aware that you can do nothing about the five in the casino corridor and in Round Hill, but this would be the seventh location in a five-mile span for a very small area. So I was just curious if we've considered that and the benefits of a seventh one versus keeping Tahoe blue and supporting Tahoe locals. So do we need a seventh one because lovers of Lake Tahoe who are local and visitors alike come here to support the lake and Lake Tahoe locals? So having a seventh Starbucks doesn't seem like it is aligned with the values that are at the heart of Lake Tahoe and the foundation of the tourist economy that supports our community. And after speaking with the owners of four local coffee shops that are within one mile of that location and two being within half a mile, and then some regulars of those coffee shops, we were just wondering if it was considered at all, if the benefits outweigh of having seven Starbucks versus keeping Tahoe blue and supporting Tahoe locals. In addition to that, it's going to be far more popular with the global popularity of Starbucks than the Jack in the Boxes now. It's only open 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and isn't frequented from eyewitness. I don't have stats on that, but I think we could agree that Starbucks would be a lot more popular and that drive-through would be used. It would have a potential to increase air emissions, pollution in the lake, and clog up traffic. It's not very beautiful for the Lake Tahoe beautification project and would not support those local business owners. So I was just curious if we could consider, do we need a seventh slash 12th location in South Lake Tahoe? Does it support future generations of families who want to start businesses here? And does it retain the charm of Lake Tahoe? We come here to support locals, and they're going to get seven Starbucks. Just wanted to ask and consider that if it's still in motion. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I hadn't seen anything about it, actually. But yeah, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Do we have anyone else in the audience? All right. Now that we've double-checked, let's open it up for Zoom, please.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide general public comment. There are no hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. With that, we will close public comment and move on to item one on our agenda, which is the reorganization of the Planning Commission. I think this is just really a discussion item, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment first. Anyone in the audience? No? All right, let's open it up to Zoom.
There are no hands raised on the Zoom chair.
All right. And I don't believe there's any kind of presentation on this, right, John?
No, there isn't. It's just a discussion among running commissioners. If you choose to select new vice, new chair and new vice chair, with absence of Commissioner Imhoff, I would recommend the item be continued to December.
That is, I think, what I would also prefer, especially since I will no longer be with you lovely people. I think it should be among the four of you to decide who will be kind of taking over those positions. So I would also agree to continue the item. Do we have to make a motion to do that?
Well, how many, how many meetings do we have until, until we have new appointees coming on?
John?
Can you clarify that?
So new members potentially could be selected and appointed in January, but it has taken longer. At earliest, we can get new members.
Is there a meeting in January?
Yes. Next month, we'll be coming to you with schedule for 2026 Planning Commission meetings.
Okay, so there's a potential meeting, there's a meeting in December and a potential meeting in January?
That is correct.
Okay. Are we able to work on just having a, without a chair, just go off a vice chair?
Say that again, Commissioner Williams?
Are we, are we able to, to continue our work without a chair and just have a vice chair?
Yes, the, the vice chair can act in that capacity, and I would defer to Mr. Bardzo to confirm.
Yes, you could have to do that.
Well, I would like to suggest that since, since Gavin and Julia are both up for a nomination this year, and then we're going to have to replace you, that maybe what we do is we, I would like to make a motion that we wait, we table this until we have a new, new commission.
I agree with the idea, as long as Julia, you're able to run the meetings December and January. If you, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that and you don't have any, any plans that would get in the way.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I agree with that idea.
Me too.
You guys want to make a motion to that, since we're not going to be continuing it?
I did make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
Yeah, it just popped up.
Okay. That motion carries.
All right. Onto our consent agenda, which in this case is our Planning Commission meetings from last month. Once again, we will open it up to public comment for this item. Seeing no one interested in speaking in the audience, let's open it up for Zoom.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide public comment on the consent agenda. There are no hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, bringing back to the Planning Commission for discussion and a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
You can just take a verbal vote until we get that fixed.
Well, it's showing on my screen. It's just not displaying on the big TV.
You can just announce the result.
Okay. That motion carries.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business. We do have a little bit of reorganization on our agenda. So item three, which was a denial appeal at 716 Clement Street, is going to be continued. And we will bring item up, item six up for presentation, which is our Old Colony in Residence's tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes, and we will hear from Mr. Hitchcock.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon.
Sorry, just before we do that, I do have to accuse myself for, recuse myself potential conflict of interest with my employer.
All right. For the record, John Hitchcock, Planning Manager with the City of South Lake Tahoe. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. The agenda item before you for consideration today is Old Colony in Residence tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes. The project is located at 3794 Montreal Road. This is located just south of the old, I shouldn't say old, but what used to be called the Creston V Shopping Center, which is now Target, and is one parcel over from Van Sickle by State Park. The project location is shown on your, on your, in your PC packet on page 150. The underlying project, the proposed project is, the underlying project will be subdivided. The proposed project that had been proposed to be subdivided was approved by the Planning Commission on September 19th, 2024, when the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 2024-021, approving design review permit number 24-107, allowing for the construction of up to 30 multifamily units with intent to subdivide these units into airspace condominiums. Prior to the property, they only being able to market the units for sale, the applicant is required to obtain a tentative map approval from the local legislative body and then record a final map and a condo map, which they will submit to the state of California prior to marketing any of the units. The first step in this process is today's consideration of tentative map. The proposed tentative map is shown on page 139 of your PC packet, and will subdivide nine buildings into airspace condominiums. The buildings can further be subdivided into individual units with a condo map after the final map is recorded. Once a tentative map is approved by the city council, I'm sorry, once the tentative map is approved by Planning Commission and then by city council, the applicant will have 24 months to obtain approval of final map, with the option also of extending that deadline pursuant to the Subdivision Map Act. The following findings are required in order to approve a tentative map. One, the project is consistent with the general plan. The tourist core is, the location of the project is in the tourist core, which is identified by the general plan as a tourist center that allows and encourages high-density residential in tourist areas. Finding number two is the design improvements proposed subdivision are consistent with applicable general and specific plans. In this case, the underlying project was found to be consistent with the design development standards of the tourist core area plan when the Planning Commission approved the project back in September 19, 2024. Finding number three, the site is physically suitable for the type of development. The portion of the project site that is being developed is verified as Class VII, high capability. The project is also proposing to use TRP verified line coverage, and the property is also located in an area where the city encourages and wants a direct high-density development towards this location. Finding four, the site is physically suitable for the proposed density of the development. Tourist Core Mixtures District is intended to support and encourage high-density residential tourist uses. In this case, the proposed project will result in a density of eight units per acre. Finding number five, the design of subdivision is not likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially and avoidably injure fish, wildlife, or their habitat. When the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 2024-021, finding the project was category exempt from CEQA under section 15332, class 32, infill development. Also made appropriate findings to support that exemption. That exemption was duly filed with the Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation and also the County of Adirondack. Finding six, the design of the subdivision is not likely to cause serious public health problems. The proposed project is consistent with city-state and TRPA regulations. The proposed project must install water quality BMPs, mitigate, mitigate air quality impacts, and be built to meet the California Building Code and fire and defense space standards. The last finding is the design of subdivision will not conflict with easements acquired by the public at large. The tentative map includes public easements in favor of the city, including snow storage easements. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission pass a resolution making all the findings set forth in resolution and recommending that the city council approve the tentative subdivision map. And with that concludes my presentation, and I'm here, I can answer your questions. And also, Mr. Exline representing, Mr. Wishmeyer also has a brief presentation for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock. Mr. Exline, I'm assuming you have a presentation as well?
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. Nick Exline, for the record, it's wonderful to be with you today. Thank you so much for moving us in front of the VHR items. That was greatly appreciated, and I think in fairness to the, the young woman who spoke earlier, I'm more of a cup of Tahoe, three pints kind of guy, and so wanted to get that on the record as well. And so, you know, obviously, we're here today for, for a tentative mapping action, but let's be blunt, tentative mapping actions aren't terribly exciting. And so what I wanted to do, some of this will be redundant for people on the commission, but wanted to just bring some context back to the, the underlying project, the benefits, and then we can talk, you know, get a little bit of the mapping specifics and then open it up to questions. And so, you know, the slide you see in front of you is, you know, very similar to what we'd had for the original project approval. And so really what this project orchestrated in and brought forth was SEZ restoration. It was a long, extensive process. Mr. Wishmeyer worked with many stakeholders and partners, including the TRPA, the lead to say Lake Tahoe, to develop an SEC restoration project that's now been moved forward, advanced, and is now completed. And so ideally, you know, that's now contributing to the benefits of water quality on the South Shore. Also, you know, is, housing is discussed, you know, regularly throughout the community. Two derestricted housing units are provided, you know, aligns with densities, Mr. Hitchcock referenced, potential for TAT tax benefits. The project was approved by the city council. The project was also approved, or excuse me, by the city planning commission and then was also approved by the TRPA. And so then really, when you get into it, again, just wanted to touch on these things. Again, wanted to just highlight the project and give credit to Mr. Wishmeyer as we move forward with this. But this is just touching on the SEC restoration, water quality improvements. Anyone that's been out there kind of after a run-in snow event, you know, see conditions like this, there's going to be significant community water quality benefits associated with the project, and then also the screening of the, the power station that's visible from the road currently. Everyone's probably come across this, so providing screening, additional vegetation, everything that's going to go into the project is actually going to be, you know, an incredible community benefit, I think, which is obviously led to the, the approval of the project by this Bali as well as the TRPA. One thing that's very important, obviously, is we look to transit options in our community. It's just the location is centralized, it's walkable, it's in a density space where transit is more viable and uses are achievable by, by bike or by foot. Not going to have any negative impacts to Van Sickle State Park. It's going to be separate way, and so people would have to exit, you know, the same way you or I would. And so then this really gets into the subdivision map. You know, Mr. Hitchcock laid out everything. Really what it is, is, you know, the residential condo subdivision meets a, a commercial piece as well that's really going to be for amenities for the site. You're thinking gym, spa, sauna, a small check-in space, and then really making sure people that work there are going to be onsite to address any potential issues, whether it be something specific to a site, backed-up toilet, you know, what have you, or something that's more community-based in terms of noise. And so that's, you know, really at a high level, the presentation we have. Again, mapping actions aren't terribly exciting. Happy to kind of talk through any mapping questions that might have or the project more broadly. Mr. Wishmeyer is here as well. I don't know if you want to make a comment, Mike? And so I'll throw it to him, and I'll be back up if there's any questions.
My name's Mike Wishmeyer. I'm the developer on this project, and nothing's really new here. Exactly what we proposed to the Planning Commission, to the city council, to the APC, to the RPIC, to the governing board, is all exactly the same. We are simply just trying to subdivide this to sell these units. That's it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
No? No? Driven by it? Looks good? I assume it's going smooth and no problems at all?
I mean, there's always, well, we'll find out next week. We're getting some snow and freezing temperatures, so, but we are still pushing through. We did get the meadow completed. We had that hydro seeded in August, so come next spring, that should be looking nice and lush and back to looking like the rest of the meadow. So definitely, you know, thumbs up on that. We are trying to get the other things moving. We have one building going in, the five-bedroom unit right now, and if anybody has driven by, you can see the, the height restriction on it of the 44 feet is really starting to cover up the power plant, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's a great project, and it's going to be great for the city of South Lake Tahoe.
So I have two questions. One is, so there's going to be two workforce housing units, is that what I was hearing?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, this subdivision map is just for the nine buildings? It's not for the other ones inside it? Is that correct?
The condo map can be done after the final subdivision map is recorded.
Okay.
The requirement for developers to submit a condo map at this time, which is the subdivision of each of the individual units. Right now, we're just subdividing the building itself.
Okay. And then, then after, after that's all been approved, they do the other one when they do, when they?
Yeah, they can, they can submit a condo map after the final map's recorded to the state of California, who's a Board of, Board of Real Estate, I believe?
Yep, the BRI.
Okay, and it doesn't come back to us at this point? We're done? Okay.
Yeah. Let me, no, the final, actually, no, it doesn't. The final map now goes to, to city council. It doesn't come back to Planning Commission.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out what the process is.
I don't think we have any other questions for you or Mr. Exline, so he can, you know, stay sitting down. Thank you very much. All right, well, with that, we will open this item up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on it? Seeing none, let's open it up for Zoom.
We'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide public comment on Agenda Item Six. There are no hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and motions. I mean, in general, we've, we've heard, I think, everything there really is to hear about this project, so in my mind, this is really just an administrative item. I don't think there's really too much debate around it, but, you know, I'll let you guys put in your two cents if there's anything else.
I agree. It's more of a formality and, oh, would you like me to make a motion? Okay. I will make a motion to pass a resolution making all the findings set forth in the resolution and recommending the city council approve the tentative subdivision map. CEQA determination, the proposed project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the Government Code, section 15332, class 32, which consists of projects characterized as infill development meeting the following conditions. The project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as with applicable zoning designation and regulations. Two, the proposed development occurs within the city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. Three, the project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Four, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. And five, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services.
I'll second it.
That motion carries, and I will note for the record that Commissioner Feiger is recused and Commissioner Imhoff is absent.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon, guys, and, yep, thank you. We'll wait for Mr. Feiger to come back to join us. Moving on to item four, our vacation home rental application denial appeal for 439 Alaway Boulevard, number 104. Oh, Ms. Moore, come on up.
Chair, if you wouldn't mind just going over the procedure?
Yes, of course. Almost, almost. All right, so when we do appeals, these are quasi-judicial procedure, so we follow pretty strict regulations on how we do this. So first, for each item, which is an appeal, I explain that the commission is considering the appeal and lists the address, and then I confirm that the notice of appeal, of the appeal hearing has been given to the appellant. Then this is kind of the order of operations. First, we hear the evidence and testimony and an opening statement by staff. Sorry, I'm going to skip that. First, we hear an opening statement and remarks by the staff to provide background information on the matter at issue. Then we hear an opening statement and any remarks by the appellant and/or their attorney, and evidence or testimony from the appellant, and this is followed by any questions the commissioners or others, including staff, may have. From there, we move on, and we hear evidence or testimony from staff members concerning any issues which were raised by the appellant surrounding the matter, which is followed by comments by the applicant. And if there's an attorney or someone else present, they are also able to comment. This is then followed by any questions by the appellant and/or the commissioners. Then we hear evidence or testimony from the appellant and/or their attorney in rebuttal to or in clarification of any other evidence or testimony presented, along with any closing statements or remarks that the appellant wishes to make. Finally, we will have public comment, and then following the presentation and testimony, the commission brings it back to deliberate and vote on whether or not to grant the relief for the, the actions sought, assuming we have all the information. If we feel like we do not have all of the information to make a decision, we can continue the item until we have the information. All right, now, Ms. Moore, let's hear about the background for this item. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. For the record, my name is Katherine Moore, and I'm an assistant planner with the city of South Lake Tahoe. The item before you is a vacation home rental application denial appeal. The property is 439 Alaway Boulevard, Unit 104, and the appellant is Mr. Russell Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez submitted their first application on June 23rd, 2025, which was the first day that applications could be submitted for preferred applicants. On July 21st, 2025, this application was rejected due to missing information on the application. Mr. Alvarez did not provide a previous VHR permit number, which is necessary to verify their eligibility to apply during the initial 60-day preferred applicant period pursuant to City Council Resolution 2025-052. On July 23rd, 2025, the appellant reapplied with a second application for the same property with all the required information. On September 11th, 2025, this application was rejected, and the property was deemed ineligible for a VHR permit due to the property being an attached condominium, which is a multifamily dwelling per the current VHR ordinance, and a lack of evidence showing ownership of this condo before September 1st, 2016. That concludes the background for this item, and additional information will be provided during the next portion of the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will go ahead and hear from the appellant, if they're here. Oh, okay, perfect.
And I do see that they are a panelist, so you should be able to unmute yourself.
And I do see that they are a panelist, so you should be able to unmute yourself. I see we have Russ's iPhone 13. Russ, are you able to hear us? All right, Chair, I'm not sure if he's able to hear the conversation.
We shouldn't move forward with this until we've dealt with the, the technical issue or confirmed whether or not. So I would suggest continuing this. Let's go to the other one, and then we'll return to this, see if we can, in the meantime, resolve the tech issue.
Could you try and see if he can do like a thumbs up or a thumbs?
Yeah, his hand is raised, but he is a panelist, so he should be able to unmute himself.
Can you do it at all for him?
We, we could also take a short break and see if we could resolve it.
Maybe let's do that.
If you'd like to take a five-minute break, I can go back in the AV room and see if we can get this resolved.
Perfect, thank you. Five-minute break, so we will be back at, let's see, 3:40.
Russ, are you able to hear us? Well, give him, give him just a second, because we gotta bring the meeting back.
All right, everyone, thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and restart our meeting. And so we stopped at hearing any opening statement and remarks by the appellant, who will do his best now. Okay, let's, let's hear it.
Mr. Alvarez, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name's Russ Alvarez. I own the townhouse at 439 Alaway, number 104. And we, my parents bought it, little history of the place, in 1976. And my dad passed away in 1993. And my mom added my name to the deed at that time in 1998. And in 2006, my mom and I set up a short-term rental program with Tahoe Accommodations and received a city permit, number 103364, at that time. And we've had that permit since, from 2006 to 2021, until Proposition T, or Measure T. And in 2017, my mom passed away, and my name was added to the deed. It was added to the deed after my mom, excuse me, after my dad passed away. Then when my mom passed away, the lawyers took her name off and had my name on it. And I kept the rental contract with Tahoe Accommodations and continued the city permit with the same number until Measure T. Rental is, and then we rented the place full-time until the tenant moved out in 2023. During that time, we remodeled the townhouse, including new windows, sliding bathroom, patio door, new kitchen, bathroom, and floor. It is a great family rental. When we rented it before, it's two bedrooms with a king-size bed and two twins in the guest room and a hide-a-bed and living room. It sleeps six. It has a large backyard with a private dock, security fence around the water. And Tahoe Keys offers indoor and outdoor pool for the tenants, pickleball, tennis courts, a kids' playground area, private beach, and it's safe streets, grass area for kids to play. Our kids, when they were little, loved driving, riding their trucks around the townhouse area. And when I first signed up, I put down as a condo, but email from Tahoe E says it's a townhouse. And so I've had the permit through the city since 2019 until Measure T. And we hope you can allow us to offer the townhouse for short-term rental and V H R permits again. And we consider this kind of our second home. We spend usually the month of August at Tahoe and then during the winter also. So we hope we can get it back under the rental program. If you have any questions, please go ahead and ask me. And I did send copies of all the permits from 2006 to 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for providing that information. So this is a chance for the commissioners and staff to ask questions of the appellant. Do we have any questions for Mr. Alvarez?
So you stated that your mother brought you on the deed after your father passed away. When were you brought off that deed? Because I think you, what year did you say you were brought on the deed?
Yeah, the lawyers.
With you and your mother together?
It was my mom and me on the deed at that time.
What year was that?
In 1998.
Okay, and when were you brought off the deed, though?
Pardon? When was I brought off the deed?
Yes.
Oh, I was, I'm still on the deed. It was signed over to me when she passed away completely.
Okay, so you've been continuously on, on the, listed as owner on this property since 1998?
Yes. And we've had the city permit since 2006.
So I'm kind of just looking at our attachments here, and we do not have a copy of the deed from 1998. So can you provide that?
Sure, I can look for that and find that. And I think I had.
The one we're looking at is from 2018.
I can look in my files for that. I only have it right in front of me. What I have in front of me is just a city's clerk affidavit.
I think what I might do is go ahead and let you continue to search within your files and see if you can find that. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and hear evidence or testimony from staff members regarding the matter. So basically, just furthering their presentation. All right, thank you, Mr. Alvarez. We'll get back to you shortly, and then we'll hear from Ms. Moore.
Do I stay on the Zoom meeting?
Uh, yeah, please stay on, because you'll be hearing us back and forth. We've, we've got a few more times. We're gonna be bringing you back to chat with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'm an assistant planner with the city. I'll start, I'll start by first explaining why this property is not eligible for a V H R permit and then responding to Mr. Alvarez's appeal form. 439 Alaway Boulevard, Unit 104, is an attached condo, meaning it shares a wall with an adjacent condo. Pursuant to South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.370, a multifamily dwelling unit is defined as a dwelling unit that is attached, meaning that it shares at least one wall, floor, or ceiling with at least one other dwelling unit, except that condos within the tourist core area plan are not considered multifamily dwelling units. The subject property is not located in the tourist core area plan, thus is classified as a multifamily dwelling unit. Pursuant to South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380D1, vacation home rentals are not permitted in any multifamily dwellings. An exception to this provision can be found in South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380D2. This exception allows owners of attached condos that had a valid V H R permit on September 1, 2016, to apply for a V H R permit under the current V H R ordinance. Mr. Alvarez provided two property title transfers that both occurred after September 1, 2016. The first property title transfer is a quitclaim deed, which can be found on Page 7 in Attachment 3. And it shows the transfer of the subject property from Byron N. Alvarez, who is a successor trustee of the Milton A. Alvarez and Elizabeth N. Alvarez Trust of 1990, to the appellant on November 7, 2017. The second property title transfer is a grant deed, which can be referenced in Attachment 5, and it shows the transfer of the subject property from the appellant to Alvarez Realty LLC on October 22, 2018. Since both, since both property title transfers occurred after September 1, 2016, the city does not recognize Mr. Alvarez holding a valid V H R permit pursuant to South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380C2A. This code section allows V H R permits to be transferred from one owner of a V H R to another owner of a V H R, as long as the transferee was an owner of the V H R at the time the V H R application was submitted to the city. The transferee in this instance is the appellant, Mr. Alvarez, the original owner of the subject property, which is the Milton A. Alvarez and Elizabeth N. Alvarez Trust of 1990, established a V H R permit before September 1, 2016. This established V H R permit cannot be transferred to the appellant because they have not been able to successfully demonstrate that they own this property at the time the V H R application was submitted to the city. Without a valid V H R permit, the city recognizes the subject property as a multifamily dwelling unit, which automatically makes the property ineligible to obtain a V H R permit per the current V H R ordinance. On September 22, 2025, the city clerk received an appeal form from Mr. Alvarez regarding the V H R application denial. This appeal form includes a brief note and evidence from Mr. Alvarez for consideration. This can be found in Attachment 3, and a summary is provided in the background section of the staff report. I would like to respond to some of these items. Mr. Alvarez's first point in support of their appeal is that the subject property has been in their family since 1976, and Mr. Alvarez legally inherited the property on November 7, 2017, with a quitclaim deed. Per South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380D2, an exception to accept V H R applications for attached condos may only be granted if the owner had a valid V H R permit before September 1, 2016. As mentioned earlier, Mr. Alvarez has not been able to demonstrate that they own the property before September 1, 2016, thus they do not qualify for this exception. Mr. Alvarez's second point is that their mother established a valid V H R permit prior to September 1, 2016, and Mr. Alvarez was able to renew this V H R permit for many years until 2021 pursuant to Measure T. Per South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380C2, the transfer of V H R permits is prohibited unless it falls under the exception outlined in South Lake Tahoe City Code, Section 3.50.380C2A. Although Mr. Alvarez was able to renew the V H R permit that their mother established before September 1, 2016, this does not supersede the requirements per this code section. The city does not recognize the appellant as holding a valid V H R permit because they have not provided sufficient evidence showing that they own the property at the time when their mother applied for a V H R permit. Without a valid V H R permit, this property is recognized solely as a multifamily dwelling and is automatically ineligible for a V H R permit. Thank you. I'm available to, oh, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So once again, we are now able to Thank you. So once again, we are now able to ask questions by the commission and/or the appellant to Ms. Moore's presentation. Do we have any questions, or does the appellant have any questions? Mr. Alvarez, did you have any questions?
No. Can you hear me?
Commissioners?
So when was the first date that Mr. Alvarez was on the VHR permit?
Staff portion? Is this the questions-to-staff portion?
Yes, yes, it is.
We have a record of November 7th, 2017.
So that would have been after the quitclaim deed, right?
That is the quitclaim deed, November 7th, 2017, which is after September 1st, 2016.
Right. And so basically, what I have him looking for is anything showing that he was an owner prior to that date.
Correct.
That's correct. If Mr. Alvarez can show that he is named as part of the Milton A. Alvarez and Elizabeth Ann Alvarez Trust of 1990, then that transfer would be a legal transfer for the purposes of continuing the VHR permit.
So if he was a beneficiary of the trust?
If he's named in the trust, as an owner of the trust.
As a beneficiary.
Not a beneficiary.
Thank you for the clarification. Do we have any other questions? No. All right. In that case, we will go on to our next portion of the proceeding, which is, Mr. Alvarez, we're going to bring you back up to give us any evidence or testimony in rebuttal to or in clarification of any of the evidence that's been presented by the staff thus far, along with any closing remarks. And I think the main thing we are really looking for from you is some form of written evidence to show that you were an owner prior to that deed in 2017. So once again, whether you have something stating that you were part of the trust as an owner, or whether you have any previous history from before 2016.
Okay. So I mean, I haven't my file someplace. I need to go up and find it. So do I, can I send that to you or email it to you when I find it?
Yeah, if you have some document that you can email to staff, you can absolutely do that. If you wanted us to continue the conversation today and basically make a decision today, we would need to have that information like right now. Otherwise, we would most likely continue the item due to insufficient information.
And who do we, what address would I send that to?
Mr. Hitchcock, do you-
Send it to Catherine Moore. You can email it to Catherine Moore.
To Kathy Moore? Catherine Moore?
Yeah, our assistant planner.
Okay. Yeah, I have her. It's kmoore@cityofslt.gov.
That is correct.
Okay. And so they want something that shows me on the deed somewhere prior to 2017. Is that correct?
Yes, anything prior to, I believe it was September 1st, 2016. Or named in the trust.
Because what, yeah, the only thing I have on me right now is my quitclaim deed that's dated 2017.
Yeah, so we have that information. We're looking for something earlier than that, from prior to September 1st, 2016.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
I would, I'm assuming it's going to take some time for Mr. Alvarez to gather additional information. I would recommend that this item be continued so he can do his research and provide it to staff.
I would agree. Mr. Alvarez, are you comfortable with that? And this would be continued to the next meeting where, you know, if you provide any additional evidence or information to the planning commission, we can make a decision at that time.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll be notified when that meeting will be?
If you email it to Ms. Moore, it'll make its way to all the appropriate people.
Okay, will do.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your time tonight, and we will go ahead and continue this item to next, next month's meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Chair, if you wanted to state for the record the date and time of that meeting?
What is the date and time?
Mr. Hitchcock?
I will let Mr. Hitchcock tell us the date and time of that meeting.
December 11th at 3:30. I'm sorry, 3 o'clock PM.
And so, Mr. Alvarez, if you're listening, that was December 11th, 3 PM. I'm sure it will be listed on the city's website as well. So keep an eye out, and we'll see you. Ben?
Yeah, we'll send a new notice of meeting to Mr. Alvarez.
Yeah. And Chair, to be clear, this, this item, because it's continued to a date certain, will be on the next agenda. There'll be a staff report attached documenting basically that it was continued and any additional evidence that was presented to staff.
Thank you, everyone, for that. That was nice and simple, and hopefully Mr. Alvarez can find that information. All right. Well, with that, we will move on to Item 5, which is Vacation Home Rental Application Denial Appeal for 741 Lakeview Avenue. This time we will hear from Ms. Schoolman. And so once again, we are starting with an opening statement and remarks by staff to provide background information on the issue.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Gretchen Schoolman, and I'm an assistant planner with the city. The item before you is an appeal for a vacation home rental permit denial for the property located at 741 Lakeview Avenue. The appellant is Mrs. Michelle Murphy, and I believe her property manager, Ms. Shannon, Ms. Stullier, is also in attendance. The VHR application was submitted on August 23rd, 2025. The property was deemed ineligible for a VHR permit on September 16th, 2025, after a VHR permit was issued to a neighboring property located at 731 Lakeview Avenue, which created a buffer that affected Mrs. Murphy's property pursuant to the anti clustering provisions of City Code 3.50.380F1. Although 731 Lakeview Avenue and 741 Lakeview Avenue submitted their applications on the same day, 731 Lakeview Avenue received the VHR permit first as the applicant completed the required inspection and paid the associated fees ahead of 741 Lakeview Avenue. Mrs. Murphy has made the argument that Ms. Lynette Edwards was not the owner of 731 Lakeview Avenue on August 23rd when applying for the VHR permit and was an escrow for the property. City Code Section 3.50.390B1, which lists the filing requirements for a VHR permit, does not require a grant deed to be provided with the application. The Community Service Division deemed the application complete based on the information provided. On October 1st, 2025, Mrs. Murphy's appeal was received by the city clerk. That concludes my introductory remarks, and I will provide further evidence during the portion of the appeal. Thank you.
Very much. And so now we will go ahead and hear from our appellant and/or their attorney, and they are able to present us an opening statement, any evidence or testimony. I'm assuming, Ms. Murphy?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Just gotta sit up here for a second. Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for hearing my appeal. My name is Michelle Murphy, owner of 741 Lakeview Avenue. My property manager, Shannon Mastiller, is attending via Zoom, as well as my attorney, Joe Moore, in the event they would like to make comment. The city is going to ask you to believe that it is irrelevant or immaterial that on August 23rd, a woman applied for a VHR permit 13 days, 6 hours, and 27 minutes before she was the legal homeowner of 731 Lakeview Avenue. They are going to try and convince you that it is immaterial that on September 4th, they accepted an application, deemed it complete, and accepted a sizable payment from the applicant that was still not the homeowner. They are going to ask you to ignore this blatant disregard for the application process and believe they issued a valid permit to 731 Lakeview Avenue, which then created a buffer to my property. I'm going to ask you not to ignore it, and I'm going to assert that this improper issuance is extremely relevant to my appeal. Simply put, my application for a VHR permit was buffered out by a VHR permit that should not have been granted. The recipient of the permit at 731 Lakeview Avenue was not the owner of the property when she applied. She falsely claimed ownership on the application and therefore should not have received a permit. Under Ordinance 2025-1200-3.50.390, Vacation Home Rental Procedures, it reads, "It shall be the applicant's responsibility to provide all information and materials required to comply with the vacation home rental application supplemental requirements." Every application, every applicant for a VHR permit is required to follow many detailed steps to be in compliance with the ordinance. It was actually a quite rigorous and expensive process to complete, and if the steps aren't completed, the city will not issue a permit. The city should be held to the same standard. You will also hear the city argue today that the filing requirements for a VHR permit does not require a grant deed to be provided with the application. That is correct. But here's what they do require, that you answer truthfully, identify yourself as an owner or owner's representative, and sign and date to that effect. Let me share with you what is required on the initial application. I bought a printed one. It's a very similar one online. First, the property owner's name. And second, a signed and dated declaration that reads, "I hereby declare, under penalty of perjury, that this application and all information submitted as part of this application are true and accurate to the best of my knowledge. I am the owner of the subject property or have been authorized in writing by the owner of the subject property to represent this application." It is abundantly clear from this application that ownership is fundamental to the VHR application process. It is disturbing to me that the city does not want to rectify what I believe initially was just an honest oversight. I really did. I reached out to them, and I brought this up. I said, hey, maybe you didn't know, house down the street from me, it's on the market, hasn't closed yet. The city risks setting precedent that people can apply for a VHR permit before buying or owning a home in South Lake Tahoe. 731 Lakeview Avenue was not eligible to submit an application until September 5th at 3:27 PM, as recorded on their grant deed that I submitted. I have a copy here, too, but I've provided it in my packet. That is 13-plus days after I submitted my application. It is also published that applications are processed in the order received. My inspection should not have been canceled on September 19th. I should be holding permit today. I own my home since August 24th, 2022. I followed the rules of the application process, and I asked the city and the commission to do the same. If this map were a little wider, you can see even as of today's date, if I were granted a permit, there would not be a buffer around my property. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. So we do have the opportunity to ask you follow-up questions, and staff can ask you questions as well. So do we have any questions for Ms. Murphy? Staff? No? All right. Thank you so much. We'll bring you back up in a moment.
Thank you.
All right. Now we will hear evidence and testimony from staff members regarding any of the issues raised surrounding this matter. And once again, this can be followed by comments by the applicant and/or their attorney, followed by questions by commissioners or the appellant. Welcome back, Ms. Schoolman.
Thank you, Chair. Again, Gretchen Schoolman, Assistant Planner. For the record, here on the screen, we have a visual representation of 731 Lakeview Avenue, and the buffer created, as you can see, 741 Lakeview Avenue is within that buffer zone. I will go through the timeline of the application for the appellant's property located at 741 Lakeview Avenue, and then the application timeline for 731 Lakeview Avenue, as well as the grant deed for this property. On August 23rd, Ms. Stullier, representing Ms. Murphy, submitted an application for a VHR permit. On September 4th, the application was accepted, and the applicant paid all applicable fees. On September 8th, the VHR inspectors were informed that the application has been accepted and coordinated with the applicant to schedule the inspection, which was set for September 19th. On September 16th, the appellant was informed the application has been rejected due to a buffer created by an issued VHR permit. Now moving on, Ms. Lynette Edwards is the applicant for 731 Lakeview Avenue. On August 23rd, Ms. Edwards submitted an application for a VHR permit. On September 4th, the application was accepted, and the applicant paid all applicable fees. And then on September 8th, the VHR inspectors were informed that the application has been accepted, and they coordinated with Ms. Edwards to set an inspection, which was dated for September 12th, so about a week before Ms. Murphy's inspection. Ms. Edwards passed the inspection and continued to pay the occupancy fees on September 16th and was issued a permit. Due to the scheduling of the inspections, Ms. Edwards was eligible to obtain the permit prior to Ms. Murphy. As stated earlier, a grant deed is not required when submitting for a VHR permit. The Community Service Division deemed the application complete based on the information that was provided. On September 5th, escrow closed for 731 Lakeview Avenue, and a grant deed was recorded naming Lynette Edwards and Tamara Brown, trustees of the Brown Edwards Family Living Trust, as the owners of the property. The grant deed is included in Ms. Murphy's appeal, which is shown in Attachment 3. At the time the permit was issued on September 16th, 2025, Ms. Edwards was the property owner of 731 Lakeview Avenue. Ms. Edwards' property at 731 Lakeview Avenue possesses a currently valid VHR permit that created a 150-foot buffer that caused Ms. Murphy's property to be ineligible for a permit. City Code Section 3.50.380F1 prohibits the operation of a VHR that is located within 150 feet of another parcel with a valid VHR permit, and this prompted staff's decision to deny 741 Lakeview Avenue the permit at issue. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schoolman. Let's see. I know I have a couple of questions, but does anybody else on the commission have questions? Yeah, go for it, Mr. Williams.
So the application, I'm assuming that's also an affidavit of truthfully stating everything on the application is correct and true?
Not sure we understand the question. Would you mind repeating it? Thank you.
So the application, when you go down and sign the bottom of it, does it not say that everything on this application is factual and true?
I believe that's the case if the Community Services Division would like to answer about the application process.
Hi. For the record, my name is Ashley Goldy. I'm the Code Compliance Investigator with the South Lake Tahoe Police Department. And yes, that is correct. So at the very bottom, you basically check a box off because now it's, the whole application process is online. You check a box off basically stating everything you filled in within the application is truthful.
Okay. And then if things that are on the application are not true, would that be a reason to decline it?
Because the general public application process did not require any ownership information. We only required ownership information for specifically condos to confirm the 2016 date. So for all we knew, the application was correct.
Yes, at the time. But now we, now we know that they were not indeed an owner of the property at the time of the application. Does the, the appellant read something on the application that says that they are the owner or the owner's representative? Is that not, is that not what is on the application? Is that not what is on the application?
She has the printed out one, which is on the city website. I would need to look at what the current one on the actual, what the application was that started in June. So a new application went on the city website that required every applicant to fill out that application, not the old one. So some things on the new form have changed. However, again, at the bottom, there is that box that does say that you were truthful on the application.
And that they're the owner or the owner's representative?
That, yeah, that everything they put on the application was truthful.
Yeah, the checkbox says that you're submitting the application either as an owner or you've been authorized by the property owner to submit an application.
Right. Submit on behalf of the owner.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, kind of to follow up. So I'm assuming, well, when was the city notified? Or when did the city realize that basically the owner at 731 had lied on their application?
I defer to Ashley on that one.
Yeah, so basically, 731, the one that got issued a permit, they were issued a permit before we knew anything. So we were basing it off of the fact that this whole application was truthful. Everything on there was as they said it was. So we didn't question ownership because that's what it said. So we did not hear about any type of discrepancy until after the permit was issued, three days later, from Ms. Murphy.
So I'm guessing this is probably the first time something like this has occurred. So we're trying to sort of establish, I guess, precedent in some way on what to do if this happens in the future. So I definitely appreciate the clarity with sort of the timeline and exactly what happened with both of these properties. I think that's all the questions I have specific to this presentation. Did you guys have any others?
I had one. And I should know this, but for the appeals process, is it only the person who's? Can anybody appeal like a decision? So like, could somebody appeal like a neighbor getting a VHR permit, even if it's not them? Or do you have to be like an affected party to appeal it? Like, that's what I'm saying is like, so what I? Yeah, like, there's nothing we can do right now. We don't have anything in front of us right now about this one that was granted.
Commissioner, I think I can shed some light on that. So the other property besides the 741, that's outside of the decision that the planning commission is making today. Whether or not that is, there's an issue with that, yes or no? There would have to be, it would be a staff decision. Then they would have the right to appeal that and then they would be here in the same way. But they haven't been notified of this today. They're not a party to this. So their permit is outside the scope of your decision-making.
I appreciate that clarification. I think that's really helpful. Do we have any other questions before moving on? Nope. All right. Thank you, everyone. So Ms. Murphy will bring you back up to go ahead and provide any evidence or testimony in rebuttal or in clarification to any of the discussion that we just had, along with any closing statements.
Thank you. First, I want to answer Mr. Williams' question because I brought out the printed and the online version so that you know exactly what was signed online by the applicant. When you put your name as owner, you have to check a yes or no box. And it says, "I declare that I'm authorized to submit this application either as the owner of the vacation home rental property or as an agent, representative, or authorized representative of the owner of the vacation home rental property." Yes or no? "I attest that any and all applicable covenants, conditions, and restrictions are consistent with and would not prohibit issuance of a vacation home rental permit for the proposed property." Yes or no? So that is what was signed by the applicant online. I also have provided by the staff here, they showed the web application details. There's a print in the packet, so that's why I got it. Otherwise, I wouldn't have received it. It shows the applicant's name right here. It shows the date of August 23rd and it shows that she checked the box that said that she was confirming this statement. I also want you to know that I did call the staff because I genuinely felt like this was just an honest mistake. Like, how would you know? How would they know that this house had been on the market for a long time and it was an escrow? They wouldn't know. So I just called and said, hey, just want to let you guys know this house hasn't even closed, et cetera. I didn't get any headway on that. So I sent a very detailed note to Sonya Wheeler. I gave her the dates, the close escrow. And I also provided, you know, the information of what trust it was from one to another. I said, I believe this is an honest mistake. And her reply, I just thought, I just really thought the city was going to say, oh, okay, thanks for letting us know. We'll address that. I didn't know I was going to be here today. I was not planning on it. But she replied to me and I expected them to look into it, but maybe they did not. And she replied to me that 731 Lakeview Avenue was in a trust dated back to August 2012, which I knew that was the previous trust. And she said, "I do not know what's public information at this time, so I'm unable to give any of that to you, but you're welcome to research on your end." And then she also added that there's nothing more that I nor the department can do as we're following the guidance of our city council and will not decide otherwise. So I was surprised. That's not what I expected. I don't know, is this my last time? Do I get to make my closing comment now? I wasn't sure what the order was. I forgot.
Chair Biercheck? Yes. I will note that we also have Shannon Mastelier available over Zoom with her hand raised, if you would like to hear from her.
And that's your representative? Okay, so let's go ahead and hear from her.
Shannon, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Hi there. My name is Shannon Mastelier. I've been working for the Murphy family since they purchased 741 Lakeview in 2022, helping them to improve a property that sat on the market for over a year. Being a lakefront property, it was subject to the intense city and especially TRPA requirements and oversight for renovation. So we have become familiar with South Lake Tahoe agency involvement and everything that that entails. At least with the TRPA, we know exactly what and therefore how to meet the stringent requirements. Regarding this VHR ordinance, I think the city did get something right. And that's now protection for the neighbors and the neighborhoods. You may not know it, but there is a 25-point inspection checklist that includes signage at the street that has both phone numbers and a QR code that people, even just walking by, could make complaints. There is a VHR good neighbor contract that is signed by the owners and the property managers. There are noise monitors, video monitors, and parking restrictions required. As long as you guys or the city has good enforcement for these complaints, I really think the neighbors and the neighborhood are going to be well taken care of. However, when it comes to the VHR application process, the applicants have not been taken care of. The process is not only poorly written and unclear, it's also entirely opaque on our side. There's no way to track our application or know if there is a conflicting application also underway. So all these owners are spending tons of money. I mean, the Murphys, the Murphys unfortunately didn't have the paved parking area. So they had to install paved parking to the tune of $33,000. The reason being, because of being lakefront, they are subject to TRPA, which means they could only use permeable pavers, which is very expensive. Anyway, fine, you know, they don't mind needing all of that rigorous kind of requirements. So they've been following all the rules to meet these 25 points for inspection. And then people are just getting summarily buffered out, just randomly. It's just so unfair. I think it's actually unethical. Because once you've been buffered out, there is no path to get one of these extremely valuable VHR permits until that conflicting permit holder just gives it up. In fact, there's not even, there's not even a mechanism in the ordinance or the process that alerts other people that would be interested that that has happened. Commissioners, a VHR permit is way too valuable for the process to be set up in this haphazard way. But since this is the way it's currently managed, we ask that you respect it like we have to respect it. If an applicant is not eligible for a permit because they don't own the property, they should be disqualified from the process. They'll just have to get in line like everyone else. Thank you.
Very much. I'm not sure if you want to follow that up with anything.
I'm just going to do a short wrap here.
Yeah, go for it.
I've reviewed the videotapes of recent appeals because I wanted to see like, what was I in for? Fortunately, I looked a few days ago and I was like, oh my God. But I noted that the city and the city attorney have asked you to uphold like selective references in the ordinance. And I'm asking you to uphold the application process outlined in the same ordinance. You know, when you visit the city website and click on the VHR information, the first thing that appears on there, on the page, is the City Council Resolution 2025-052 established the preferred application period, current ordinance that is to be followed. Ordinance 2025-1200 contains regulations of the permitting and operation of vacation home rentals within this city. So that's what we're following. Ownership is fundamental to the application process. I'm asking you, the commissioners, to hold the city to a higher standard, the standard which they put forth. I've owned, you know, I've owned my property since '22. I follow the application process and I'm asking you to approve my appeal, reinstate my inspection, which I'm confident I will pass, and grant me a permit at 741 Lakeview Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know I have a couple of questions for you, but does anybody else? All right. My main question is, you know, we're constantly talking about, you know, your 741, your neighbor's 731, 731. Obviously, 731 doesn't have any chance to defend themselves. They were not notified. Have you talked to them?
I have not recently. The owner actually, she owns another property that she actually got a permit for a couple of blocks away. And she, I've not met her and she contacted me before she bought the house and said that she was interested in buying a lakefront property and renting it out. And so I was familiar with who she was and I knew that she was interested in purchasing it. But I've never met her in person. And this is, you know, I know that she's a real estate agent herself and she applied for another permit for other properties, so I'm sure she's familiar with the process. But I've never met her in person. It's not personal. There's no, you know, vendetta. We had a nice exchange over email and I said, I'd love to meet you next time I'm here. And then when, you know, this started, you know, I just haven't been at the property recently and haven't seen her. So I just have not had any correspondence with her since then. Yeah.
Did you know the previous owners? Do you know if they by chance did give her some sort of document allowing her to make the application?
I don't personally know the previous owners. I mean, you can find all this information online and it was clear after I did my research that it was a clean sale. And, you know, I asked another agent to look at the documentation and it was just, it's a clean sale. It's from one trust to a completely different trust. And it was an escrow. And in the state of California, when a property is in escrow, it's not held by the owner or the seller, actually. And I know that she would know that as a real estate agent. But, yeah.
Thank you. That's pretty much all I had, unless we have anything else. Yeah?
I was just going to say it's well-known in the real estate industry to, that permits are not transferable from person to person, sale to sale. And it's also very well-known that you cannot apply for a permit till you own the property. So slip through the cracks, but I think it's very unfortunate that Ms. Murphy is in this situation because of that, something she had no control over, so.
I appreciate your time. Unless there's anything else, we will go ahead and proceed.
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So now we will open this item up for public comment. Seeing none in the audience.
Go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who would like to provide public comment on Agenda Item 5. There are no hands raised, Chair.
Someone? Would you like to come up?
Before I do, I'm going to ask Dan if one allows me to comment. Hi, just had, my name is Doug Centell. I'm Lieutenant of the South Lake Tahoe Police Department. I'm actually the Division Manager for the CSOs. I just had a quick question. Evidentiary-wise, do we have evidence of this deed? Okay. I just didn't hear it presented, so I wasn't sure if it had been presented.
So yes, we have a copy of the deed for 741 and 731. Sorry, not 741, 731.
That was my entire comment. I just wanted to make sure that that had been because it just sounded like it was being discussed and hadn't been solidified as on record as being received.
Yes, so we do see it. And thank you so much for bringing that up. Appreciate it. All right. With no other public comments, it is now back to the commission for deliberation and a vote. So to kind of, I guess, start us off, obviously, this is a unique case. We have not heard anything like this before. And for me personally, hearing that, you know, since we have a copy of the public deed for 731 and we see that obviously, like, even though it is absolutely not the staff's fault for the omission, the person applying lied and they should have known better. Obviously, we can't do anything about 731. That is sounding like it's going to be a whole different process if anything happens to it. But for me personally, looking at sort of the timeline provided by staff, in my mind, the application should have been rejected outright. And so at that point, to me, that permit should have been stopped. That's sort of my take on what we're seeing. I don't know if anybody else has thoughts?
I agree. It seems like 731 should not have gotten their permit. Definitely not staff's fault. It just, sorry. Definitely not staff's fault. 731 slipped through the cracks. They lied. I wouldn't expect somebody to just lie like that. But there's nothing we can do about that one, which means that we, I don't think we can grant an appeal because it would be illegal to have two houses within 150 feet based on city code. So I'm kind of like stuck with what to do. I do have a process question, like?
Yeah.
And maybe Dan can help out with this. Who can appeal a VHR permit? Does it have to be the owner? Like, is there any way that the 731 could come in front of us or come in front of the city?
So the way that would work would be if staff decided that they wanted to revoke that permit for a material misstatement. It would be up to staff to make that determination. If the owner of 731 appealed, then they can appeal it to the planning commission. It would be same as the hearing we have today.
And then in that case, say that happened, if we don't grant this appeal, would Ms. Murphy be able to apply again because she was only denied because of the buffer? Or is she permanently not able to apply again? Do you see what I mean?
If there were to be a future staff decision and there was no longer a validly-held permit by 731 and therefore the buffer was not in place here, then she could reapply, I believe. I'll defer to staff if they?
That's correct. She could reapply, provided there's another permedition in that area that would buffer her out. On the revocation of permits, it's in Section 3.50.420, which essentially says, "Permit issued under the terms of this article shall be revoked by the city manager at any time and include any of the following." And one of them is "material misrepresentation or omission of material fault."
Thank you for answering my question. Appreciate it.
I'm kind of a...
I'm kind of of the thought that we, that we can't penalize somebody because of failure of the process, you know, it should, granting should be part of the process, somebody prove that they actually had the legal right and ability to, to apply for it at the time of application. This, 731 did not have the legal right to apply for an application in their name, because they did not own the property at the time of the application. Through no fault of Ms. Murphy, she's, she's getting denied on this, and I'm, I think that this is something that, you know, it's been a failure of the process, and it's not, and she's getting penalized for a failure of our process. It should, it should be proved that someone is actually an owner at the time of application. They affirmed that they were owner of the application, you know, it's obviously a fraudulent application, because they said that they were and they were not. I'm more inclined to approve this appeal.
I agree with you, Doug. I think I can't really take the buffer zone into effect, because I feel like the other permit that was granted was, again, an oversight and no fault of anybody's, but I think we need to, like, throw that out the window, or at least in my mind. I just feel like it shouldn't even pertain to whether or not Ms. Murphy's appeal gets approved or not, because I feel like the, I mean, it's an unfair buffer zone for somebody who went through all the proper channels versus somebody who wasn't honest on their application, so.
Yeah, and kind of to Gavin's point, because I know you're, you're keeping us within the rules, so we are acting as a quasi-judicial body. So we, in my mind, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, get to make decisions based on our interpretation of the city code and its intent. In my mind, the intent of the code is to allow people to have a VHR permit, assuming that they did not lie on their application. So to me, regardless of whether staff chooses to revoke the permit at 731, in my mind, that permit is invalid, because it should not have been issued, and therefore, to Julia's point, to me, the buffer, the intended buffer should have been for 741, excluding 731. So regardless of how the city chooses to pursue the issue of 731, I think 741, in this case, makes a great point. So, I mean, I'm, I'm basically ready to make a motion, unless there's anything else.
Do you want to check with Council, like, what, are there any, I guess, would the city be worried about any repercussions of us? Yeah.
Obviously, it's a, this is a complex issue, but yes, the result, if you were to grant the appeal, would be that if, there would be two properties in conflict with city code, meaning the buffer, so there would be two properties within that. That's, that's kind of where it is, and we're kind of in uncharted territory from there. The, the buffer is not a basis to revoke a permit, once it's been granted, it's just a, it's a rule where you cannot issue a permit if it's within 150 feet. So, basically, would leave us where it would be a staff decision down the road if they chose to take an action against 731, and there would be a whole process for that, but absent that, we're left with a conflict with city code with the buffer.
All right, I'm making a motion to pass a resolution approving the appeal.
I'll second.
Okay, and because we took this item out of order, our vote cast system is going to require me to do a verbal vote, so I will start with Chair Viorecek.
Yes.
Actually, if we could take five minutes, we're going to need to make some changes to the resolution.
We were so, we're going to be so fast, guys, but yes, we can take a five-minute pause to make some adjustments. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking a quick look, and thank you, staff, for, you know, doing it pretty speedily. All right, so I am making a motion to pass a resolution, making all findings set forth in the resolution and approving the appeal.
If we could just make one change to that, it could be, pass resolution, making all findings set forth in the amended resolution.
Gotcha.
And granting the appeal.
Got it. All right, so I'm making a motion to pass a resolution, making all findings set forth in the amended resolution and granting the appeal.
I'll second.
Okay, and I will once again be taking a verbal vote. Chair Viorecek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Luxinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Figer?
Yes.
I will note for the record that Commissioner Imhoff is absent. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Murphy, again. All right, with that, we'll go to updates and announcements from city staff. I know we're December 11th, you already know.
Correct, the next meeting is December 11th.
Sorry to steal your thunder. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to express my gratitude to the Chair for years of service, and you will be missed, but we will look forward to helping you out in development services in years to come. So, yeah, just want to say best wishes and enjoy your new house right over the city boundary.
I mean, annexation, guys, I know, John, come on, come on.
No one in your area wants to live in the city.
I'll second that, no.
I just want to echo Zach's comments, it's been quite a tenure for you, Chair, so, I speak for myself, at least, we're, we're going to miss you, and it's been a pleasure.
Guys, you're the best.
Ditto. We're going to miss you.
I'm going to get all teary-eyed.
Come, come to our meetings and sit in the audience.
I'm going to, yeah, we're just going to run right into Planning Commissioner reports, say, yeah, goodbye, and you can't get rid of me that easy, because I will be here bugging you with projects over the years, just, you know, get reappointed, guys. It's easy, right? So, yeah.
I want to say thanks to you, it's been, for my couple, my brief time under, my time as Vice Chair, I was lucky to only have to do it a couple times, and it was daunting both those times, so it's, it's a bigger job than it looks, honestly, sitting here, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I only had to do it once when I was Vice Chair.
It could happen, it could happen again.
You were very knowledgeable and very sweet and nice, and you're going to be missed on the committee, Commission.
Thank you, guys, again. With that, my last time with the gavel, let's go home.